Good morning and welcome to this virtual press conference where we're joined by several of my colleagues and a few others who have really taken on so much work over the past couple of years with this children's separation policy by Donald Trump. When the city council convenes today for its regular meeting, I'll be joined by several colleagues demanding that 455, 545 babies and children separated from their families under the Trump administration's zero tolerance policy be reunited with their parents or guardians immediately. My colleagues and I will introduce a resolution officially denouncing this violation of human rights and demand that Congress work toward a solution. These kids and their families deserve and need our support. Despite a recent claim that these children are being well taken care of by the author of this separation policy, the cruel and deplorable conditions at these detention centers were documented by Homeland Security's own independent watchdog describing standing room only cells, children without showers and hot meals, and scenes of intense trauma and desperation. The conditions were immediately condemned by respected journalists and legal observers who witnessed scenes of children suffering from acute grief, chaotic scenes of sickness and filth, and small children tasked with changing the diapers of babies who were left in their care, separated from their parents. By September of 2019, at least seven of these children had died while in detention. All of this was carried out by Donald Trump. Still standing by his policy, he is arguably the greatest threat to the rule of law and human decency of any president in modern history. In this tragic aftermath, some two years later, there are still 545 children and toddlers whose parents cannot be found. Many of us speaking today have been involved in giving aid to the people who are suffering. I've worked with the Salvadoran American Leadership and Education Fund and the city's former immigrant advocate, Peter Shea, who's joining us this morning, to lead a delegation to Tijuana in February of last year. I have seen firsthand the conditions of refugees and asylum seekers where thousands wait for an opportunity and a fair hearing. This morning, we will call on Congress to pass meaningful legislation that protects these vulnerable people and ensure that under no circumstances, aside from threat or neglect of abuse, should a child ever be separated from their parents as they seek to enter the U.S. through asylum or any other means. Some of us are here today. First, I'd like to introduce my colleague Gil Sadio, representing the first council district. Mr. Sadio, please, please share your thoughts. Oh, and you're on mute, Mr. Sadio.
Okay. It takes a village to unmute. Okay, so let me, let me first begin by thanking you for your leadership this morning. We are excited about the prospects of moving forward this morning with a resolution on behalf of the council that makes clear position that we took immediately after Donald Trump announced his campaign. You may recall that when he announced his campaign, he did so by specifically targeting Mexicans, immigrants. He slandered them, said that they were criminals. He questioned their true desires in coming to this country. It was the first time a presidential campaign began with such open racism and anti-immigrant jargon. So we are happy to be here with you today to join in the demand that the 545 children be reunited with their parents. We're happy to be here with Peter Shea, the preeminent attorney in this field, who will help us and assist us in this process. We are appalled at the cruelty that the White House continues to exhibit. We are ashamed that Stephen Miller, a person from Southern California, from Santa Monica High School, would be the architect of this draconian policy. We are proud to join SALF. As you may recall, last year, we organized a busload of journalists to go down to the border to see what this threat was that the administration was talking about. And we found that threat to simply be young parents, young men and women with their children who were simply trying to leave environments where their family members had been killed, where guns had been placed to the heads of their wives and their daughters. I remember interviewing a young mother with three real precocious young daughters, much like my granddaughters. And I remember talking to her and asking her why she was here. The administration had already begun the policy of having people apply at the border and stay on the side, on the Mexican side of the border. And she said that an narco trafficker had assassinated her husband, and that then they came subsequent to that assassination and put a gun to her head and a gun to the head of her daughter and said, "We need you to move these drugs for us, and if you don't, we will kill you." And that is the threat, the so-called threat that the president has warned us about, that Stephen Miller has set up this policy of separation of family. It's very clear from documents, from recent books that have been written, that that policy was designed to be one of the more harsh policies ever in this nation with respect to immigration. And most ironic that in a nation that is exclusively made up of immigrants, that we would have a policy so draconian. So the good news is that we're looking forward to an election next week, and we encourage everyone to vote. The good news is that we are united in our call for uniting these families. And the good news is that this council and this city, City of Sanctuary, will call today upon the White House, upon the Senate, and upon the Congress to take all actions necessary to enact legislation to ensure that this never occurs again and that we begin the process of moving forward with an immigration reform that we can be proud of, that reflects and respects our values, and that is forward-looking and that has the same confidence and optimism, the same hopes and aspirations that each and every immigrant comes to this nation with, that that will be embodied in this new legislation. I thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell, for your leadership on this matter. I thank SALF. I thank all my colleagues that you will hear from today. We are prepared to go forward, not look back, but to go forward and to create policies that reflect the greatest hopes and aspirations of this nation. I thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio, and thank you for your decades-long pioneering work on immigrant and civil rights. Next, we have our colleague Monica Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, and I'm so proud to join you all this morning in helping to continue to keep the light focused and affixed on those families that have been tragically separated under this leadership of this administration. This president, from the very beginning, made it very clear that he had absolutely no intention of creating a humane approach to immigration. In fact, he was intent and really explicit with his language to really dehumanize and create an environment that put immigrants in a defense mode when, in fact, all they were seeking is asylum. They were seeking to evade circumstances of extreme danger, of poverty, and seeking opportunity, not different than many of us. As the daughter of Mexican immigrants, I've seen this country continue to wind the clock backwards. And it's been at the hands of this administration and those that have enabled him, those in the Senate that are complicit with these actions. In fact, I want to remind everyone that the Senate, after confirming Judge Barrett, has now gone on recess and is not going to be at work until after the election. Our communities are suffering right now, immigrant communities that are seeking asylum, individuals that have been devastatedly impacted by COVID-19, and this Senate seeks to not do any work until after the election. It's part of a systemic problem that we have here and a failure in leadership which begins in the White House. And I'm so proud to join my colleagues in this effort and movement to continue to shed light on what is wrong with the direction that we are headed in this country. I had an opportunity last year to join my friend Beto O'Rourke in Homestead in Florida to see firsthand the conditions of what youth were experiencing. We weren't allowed access to review the conditions of these detention centers, but we saw children being marched out as prisoners in these facilities in extreme weather and extreme heat. These are not the memories and environments that children should be living in, but they are being done, it is being done so, at the hands of our own government. And that is, that is just not what this country was built on, that is not the foundation of who we are. And it's imperative, it's inherent upon all of us to now raise our voices and make sure that we hold these individuals accountable for these actions. We must reunite these children with their parents. We must make sure that they are put in humane conditions. Right now, we know, in fact, that they are not. And every family member, every member of our country, every parent should be angry that children and families would be treated this way at the hands of our own government. It's disgusting, and we need to make sure that we hold this president accountable. Tuesday is our opportunity to do that. And I want to thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for convening us all today because it's important that all of us remain resolute during these very difficult and demoralizing times. I'm so proud to have allies with our friends at SALF, with incredible immigration rights lawyer, thank you, Peter, for your efforts. But it really is incumbent upon all of us to remain strong in the face of what is the most absolutely derelict version of what humanity looks like. And it's at the hands of this president, and it's at the hands of those that are complicit in supporting that leadership in the Senate. And we need to make sure that on Tuesday, we change that narrative across this country. I want to thank my friends across the country who have also been at the front lines of making sure that these detention centers have closed down. I know here in the city of Los Angeles, we have instituted policies that will prevent any private detention centers being opened here in the city of Los Angeles. And this is part of the systemic reforms that we need to be leading across this country so that we do not participate in the racist and divisive policies that continue to infringe on the rights of humanity across this nation and unfortunately really destroying the reputation of what this country is around the world. So I want to thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for convening us all this morning. And I want to invite the public to please join us in making sure that we lead by example. We do that here in Los Angeles, but we will continue to exemplify that and lead that across this country until we can eradicate this behavior and these actions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rodriguez, and thank you for your work on this issue over the past several years. And now we go from one mother to a father and another ally in this effort, speaking in one voice, and that is our colleague, Councilmember Herb Wesson.
Good morning, and let me just say that it's a pleasure to be with you all today. But it's more than a pleasure. We have a responsibility. This is who we are. We are the Los Angeles City Council. When you look at us, I think that you look at the world because you name it, we have it. The city of Los Angeles was the first city to bring in our own immigrant rights expert in Peter Shea. We started a standing committee chaired by Gil Sadio on immigrant rights. We are a city of sanctuary, and we do judge people based on their deeds and their actions, not based on what kind of documents they have in their back pockets or their dresser drawers. So I think that it is important that we lead the way because I think other cities looked to us for leadership. It was over a year ago in June on a motion that I introduced and had support of the full council where we were going to ban, we're going to ban private prisons. And the city attorney's office just released its initial ordinance so that we could implement this. Good people, it's our responsibility as Los Angeles to be the tip of the spear on just what's right. Every generation, for whatever reason, bad people are born, but also good people are born as well. And I consider that us, and we have a large responsibility. I can't think of one other person that I have ever chatted with that believes that it's okay to separate children from their parents. Not one person that I have spoken to would think that that would be the right course. So it is important that we stand up, speak out, send the message, lead the way because that's who we are and that's how we lead. So it's just, like I said, an honor to stand beside my colleagues on this day, but also a responsibility. So I want to thank everybody, Mr. O'Farrell, who's been a champion in his own right, Jocelyn, who is just a soldier, my brother Gilbert, Monica, my friend for a couple of decades, Kevin DeLeon. It's important that we speak out, and I believe as we do that, others will join us. So just thank you for allowing me to be part, stand beside you today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wesson. Well said and well done. And next, we have our newest colleague on the Los Angeles City Council and someone who has decades of experience as an organizer, as a leader in the Assembly and State Senate of California, and that is our colleague and champion of immigrant rights, Kevin DeLeon.
Good morning, Mitch. Thank you so very much for the very kind introduction of my person. Thank you very much to the incredible council members that you have today. Obviously, someone like Gil Sadio, his legacy speaks for himself, someone who's been there in the trenches for years and decades out there. And Monica Rodriguez, you know, sharing your story. Thank you, you know, for your incredible leadership, you know, in San Fernando Valley. And Herb, you know, thank you for always being in the trenches, you know, back then as Speaker, member of the Assembly, council member, council president, council member. Thank you. And SALF and Peter Shea, obviously Peter and I going back, you know, one-stop days, you know, in the trenches before I even thought I'd become an elected official. But first and foremost, again, thank you. I'm going to be very brief because I think that Gil and Monica have really said it very perfectly. For years, the Trump administration has defended the policy of separation, which in effect has been the equivalent of state sanctioned kidnapping, a policy that keeps unnecessary trauma on the most vulnerable. Monica, you know, Gil, and so many other elected officials at various levels have taken time to go down to the border to hear these children, to see these children, if not engaged, hearing them from outside when Customs and Border Patrol or the private prison administrators will not allow us to enter the sites at the border, whether it be in Ojai, you know, Chula Vista, or elsewhere. So that's why, you know, we stand up for those who have little or no voice, the most vulnerable. And that's why I want to thank you once again, Mitch, for bringing us together and moving forward this resolution with incredible advocates and incredible council members who have put their leadership on the line to move forth on policies and move forward politically to improve the condition for all individuals, regardless of who they are and where they come from. Let me say this one last time, is that, and I've said this many, many times before now, I'm going to say it again, we're not going to allow one electoral aberration to reverse generations of progress at the height of our historic diversity in a great city like Los Angeles, our scientific advancement, our economic output, in a sense of global responsibility, not in a great state like California, and especially not here in a great city like Los Angeles. So thank you very much for this opportunity to share with the fellow you, and let's move forward.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Well said. We have the great pleasure and benefit of working with an organization, all of us, that really is, gives us a mechanism to be active, to organize trips, to organize countless food drives, voter registration drives, and just an all-around supporter and foundational assistance, offering foundational assistance to Central Americans and Salvadorans. And that is SALF, Salvadoran American Leadership and Education Fund, led by our friend Jocelyn Duarte, who I've gone to Tijuana with. We've participated with Kalinka Romero and SALF on many events, as all of us probably have. And I want to thank SALF and Jocelyn and your entire team for all of the foundational work that you do. And you offer us this vehicle to put our passions and our ideas to action and give direct aid to the folks in need. So without further ado, Executive Director Jocelyn Duarte of SALF.
Thank you very much. I want to first start off by thanking all of the Los Angeles City Council members that are here today because you're denouncing the separation of families. And I would like to especially thank Councilwoman Mitchell Farrell and Councilwoman Gil Sadio for leading this resolution to protect immigrant families from further trauma. The Salvadoran American Leadership and Educational Fund stands with the members of the Los Angeles City Council in denouncing the separation of what are predominantly Central American and Mexican families. We ask Congress to work diligently to reunite families immediately. The Central American Caravans of 2018 gained great attention and were used by the current administration to criminalize asylum seekers. As an organization, we responded to the caravan by providing humanitarian aid, legal and medical resources, effectively building a network to support asylum seekers that were in limbo because of the fast-changing immigration policies like MPP, better known as Remain in Mexico policy, and the zero tolerance policy. I have met asylum seekers, entire families and young children that are fleeing various forms of violence in their country, have also bear witness and served as a legal observer based to the Center of Human Rights and Constitutional Law, visiting detention centers where children are being held in deplorable conditions. The effects of the zero tolerance policy is rippling across borders. The reunification of over 540 children are at stake. Their parents and their future is uncertain. Many of the parents were deported without due process, and many of these parents cannot be found, and that might be for various reasons. Most of the parents which were already fleeing because of fear from their own country and were seeking refuge were basically, we gave them our back and we weren't unable to help them, and so they were turned away by this administration and furthermore separated by, from their children. The inhumane effects of this policy has further created trauma in these families. The actions of this administration are clear human rights violations and violations of international law, and we, and we know that it will have prolonged lasting effects on the children and their families. There is a lack of transparency within ICE, and ICE, the rogue agency that lacks accountability, more specifically in these private, random facilities that lack the proper services for both children and adults. But we must ask Congress to hold, you know, to act and hold ICE accountable and to pass legislation that will reunify families, but most importantly, to stop separating families. As the daughter of Central American parents that fled countries that were both stricken by war, I know that immigrants come to this country to enrich our country, to enrich our city, to make meaningful contributions. The city of Los Angeles is home to one of the largest populations of Central Americans outside of their country. And so we know that our city welcomes refugees and that immigrants are approximately one-fifth of the economic force, including the essential workers that are in the front lines right now. And so as a form part of the fabric of our city, we must protect immigrant families. We must protect them from these cruel and inhumane policies. So I join my voice, my organization joins our voice to have Congress act now and reunite families.
Jocelyn, thank you so much. And if you ever want to go on one of these humanitarian trips with Jocelyn, she can navigate through the streets of Tijuana like no one I've ever seen, driving her big van, and she'll, you know, she gets the job done. So Jocelyn, thanks for putting your heart and your spirit and your soul into this work. We are better off because of it. Lastly, we have Peter Shea, who is an immigrant rights attorney and advocate and another someone who has really done foundational work in this community, and we're all proud to know and call a friend, Peter Shea. And you're on mute, sir.
Okay. I hope you can hear me now.
Yeah.
Firstly, I want to thank Mitchell Farrell and his staff member, David Giron, who've been instrumental in moving this particular resolution forward and who played a long-time role in addressing the unique needs and challenges of unaccompanied immigrant children seeking safety here in the United States. As a result, Mitch, Mitch's visit to Tijuana would actually identify some children who have been able to obtain temporary housing and social services at Casa Libre, a homeless youth shelter in Los Angeles. So a great deal of thanks to Mitch and David in his office. Of course, a lot of thanks to Gil Sadio, Herb Wesson, Kevin, Monica, all of whom have dedicated themselves to human rights, civil rights of large portions of vulnerable communities, including the immigrant community. During the most recent debate in Asheville on October 22nd, President Trump was asked about his administration's fiasco when thousands of young immigrant children were forcibly separated from their parents upon apprehension near the border. When asked about his zero tolerance policy during this debate, President Trump said, quote, "Children are brought here like coyotes, lots of bad people, cartels. They're brought here and it's easy to use and get into this country." That statement was entirely false. Through the Florife case, which is pending here in federal court in Los Angeles, we represent thousands of children detained with accompanying adults. And in well over 95% of those cases, children were accompanied
And in well over 95% of those cases, children were accompanied by parents or close relatives, not by coyotes or members of cartels. During the zero tolerance program, almost every single accompanying adult forcibly separated from a child was the child's parents. These parents were most often trying to save their children from the most dangerous and lawless countries in the world, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras. These mothers and fathers were trying to save their children from rampant violence and abject poverty. They were not coyotes and, quote, "lots of bad people," as Trump falsely claims. In fact, they were fleeing violent cartels and gangs and corrupt law enforcement agencies in no small part created by years of U.S. support for or tolerance of authoritarian dictators and widespread corruption and endemic poverty in the region. To tarnish Mexican migrants and drug dealers, criminals, rapists, and Central Americans fleeing violent countries with their children as coyotes and lots of bad people is racist, is xenophobic, and it's shameful. But that's not all the president said. It got worse. He claimed the detained children are, quote, "so well taken care of" by his administration. They're in facilities that were so clean. Well, again, through the Flores case, in which we have a settlement that sets the national standards for the detention and children, the detention and release of children, and we're constantly in federal court to enforce that settlement against the Trump administration, constantly in court, hundreds of detained minors we've interviewed have provided sworn declarations describing being locked up in overcrowded and unsanitary cages or prison-like camps, provided insufficient food and drinking water, not getting medical attention when sick, being exposed to a range of communicable diseases. Children have died on their shelf wars after being left alone for hours as their illnesses worsened. The federal courts, in our case, the Flores case, and outraged public opinion have really been the only bulwarks against President Trump's willingness to separate children from their parents and detain migrant children for long periods of time in unsafe conditions, even though they're not a danger to themselves or others or polite groups.
And Mr. Shay? Mr. Shay, we're about to lose the studio time because it's almost 10:00. And so we're probably going to have to end it there with your incredible remarks really underscoring the deplorable and inhumane conditions that these children, who were separated from their parents, existed in in recent years and are still, with the disinformation from Trump, that they're being well taken care of. Couldn't be further from the truth. He is everything that he claims other people are in his casting aspersions against others. It's just, you know, classic, it's Freudian practically, I would say. And so I want to thank everyone today. Please follow closely what we do on council. We will put this resolution forward today. We couldn't do it without all of you. And so be looking for that in council today as we put this motion forward. And we send the signal out from the West Coast, and we amplify the tragedy. And let's hope that has an effect on Congress, the Senate, even if they are on vacation. And yes, vote, if you haven't already, vote now, and certainly vote by Election Day, because we have a chance to make sure that what's happening now in this country is not who we are as a nation. We have a chance to reclaim that mantle of decency on November 3. And with that, we close, and I want to thank all of you for participating today. Mr. Shay, Ms. Duarte, of course, my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you very much.